Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is June 14, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation this evening will be offered by Councilmember Hall.
Please join with me in prayer. Dear God, I pray that you would guide us always. We pray for the world, specifically for the hungry and most vulnerable, the 49 million who are going without food right now. We pray for the people of Ukraine who are suffering. And we pray for continued help for the many hundreds of thousands of refugees from Afghanistan. We pray for the United States. We ask for wisdom and unity for our leaders to help make people's lives better. And we pray for our local Kettering community, for those who are struggling to pay their bills, and for those who are fearful of the future. Be with us and guide us. Amen.
Thank you. I would like to first recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Mike Sporone. Mike, thank you for your assistance as always. I love the hand. Okay. Mr. Scott has an excused absence this evening. May we get approval of the minutes? I think that's Mrs. Fisher.
Mr. Kleipass will be doing it today. I wasn't there.
No?
No, I was not.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the council meeting minutes and the workshop minutes from May the 24th. I find them to be in order, and I move for their approval.
Second. Okay, the motion has been seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Abstain.
Mayor Leiner.
Mayor Leiner. Okay. We have no proclamations this evening, nor special presentations, nor any public hearings. So at this point, we will take any testimony from members of the audience who would like to address legislation that's on the agenda for tonight. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. I see two guests in the audience who I suspect were not planning on giving speeches. Is that true? Okay, they are not. Okay. We will then now move on to ordinances and second reading. Mrs. Fisher, would you introduce the first? We don't have any of those either. Ordnances and first reading. Let's try that one.
Your Honor, I'll start with a resolution.
Resolutions.
How about a resolution?
How about a resolution?
How about that? I have a resolution authorizing the sale of 2808 and 2810 Gaylord Avenue and making one or more Community Housing Improvement Program loans to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton, Inc., for construction of new single-family homes. The estimated cost and funds available is $60,000. It is requested by Planning and Development, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, I believe that is Mark.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to, or will authorize us, to enter into a Community Housing Improvement Program loan agreement in the amount of $60,000 and enter into a sales agreement with Dayton, Ohio Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton for the purposes of developing two new homes at 2808 and 2810 Gaylord Avenue. In January of this year, the city council authorized the acceptance of funds from the Department of Development for the Community Housing Improvement Program. Our plan is to sell the properties for $1,000 each and then invest a $30,000 forgivable loan for each property. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Schwederman? Okay, seeing none, please move the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Leiner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio for application processing services under the U.S. Treasury's Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The estimated cost is $850,000. Funds available is zero. It's requested by Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to enter into another amendment with the Board of County Commissioners. This is for what we call the Stay Put Program. So this amendment will allocate an additional $850,000 towards the Stay Put Rental Assistance Program. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Leiner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the improvement of former fire station number 33, Bobby Place, to accommodate a police training center. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Chief Protsman.
Thank you, Your Honor. These improvements to Fire Station Number 33, Bobby Place, would give us the opportunity to change that building into a training classroom, a training simulator, and other operational needs of the Kettering Police Department. A portion of that building is also being used by the Kettering Fire Department for training as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mayor Leiner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiating quotes to contact, to contract for strategic plan consulting services. This is requested by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bergstrasser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the city to seek proposals for strategic plan consulting services. The desire for a new strategic plan for the city was an outcome of the recent city council retreat that was held a few months ago in March of 2022. We intend to hire a consultant to lead the development of the new strategic plan, which involved a significant level of community engagement. Once we receive proposals and review them, we will come back to you for additional legislation to appropriate funds for the contract. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mayor Leiner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution Number 10705-22 regarding the renovation and construction of pickleball courts at Kennedy Park and allow an additional expenditure of funds. Estimated cost is $307,520. It is budgeted at that amount. It is requested by Park's Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Okay. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned, this is an amendment to a previous resolution for the pickleball courts at Kennedy Park. We had originally estimated the project cost at $244,370, and the new estimated cost based upon bids is $307,520. So tonight's amendment will authorize the additional expenditure of $63,150 to keep the project moving forward. The additional funding will be funded under existing capital improvement program budgets underspending from other accounts. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mayor Leiner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31 of 2022. And the estimated transfers are $1,150,000, and it is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items for tonight's 2022 supplemental appropriation. The first is to appropriate the $850,000 from Montgomery County for the Rental Assistance Program or the Stay Put Program. The second item is the appropriation into the Capital Improvement Fund for the $300,000 estimated renovation cost for the police training center at the Bobby Place location. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Leiner.
Yes.
It's you. It's up to you.
She's got to say it. Okay. Ordnances and first reading?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance this evening. It's an emergency ordinance to amend Section 672.04 and 672.05 of the Codified Ordnances Regarding Fireworks and to declare it an emergency. It's requested by the Law Department. I move for approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Mr. Hamler.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance reconstitutes the prohibition against discharging, igniting, or exploding fireworks within the city of Kettering without a permit from the Fire Department. While the prohibition on the possession and use of fireworks within the city of Kettering has been in place since 1956, the passage of Ohio House Bill 172 resulted in a need to amend Section 672.04 and 672.05 of the Kettering Codified Ordnances to reconstitute the prohibition. Ohio House Bill 172 allows individuals to possess consumer-grade fireworks in Ohio, eliminating a requirement that purchasers transport consumer-grade fireworks out of the state within 48 hours of purchase, and allows any person authorized to possess consumer-grade fireworks to discharge them on their own property or another's property with permission on specifically outlined holidays. However, municipal corporations still have authority to ban the discharge, ignition, or explosion of fireworks within the confines of their municipal corporation limits, and that is what this ordinance does. Also, as explained in the ordinance, it is an emergency measure so that it will be effective before July 1, 2022, which is when the changes made by Ohio House Bill 172 will go into effect. I'd be happy to address your questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, since this is a first reading, however, it has an emergency clause, we will go ahead and vote. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Leiner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering to show the installation of traffic signs on Ackerman Boulevard, southbound at East Stroop Road in the city of Kettering, Ohio. This is being requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
First reading.
First reading.
Mr. Bergstrasser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance and first reading this evening for a minor amendment to the traffic control map and file for southbound Ackerman at the intersection with East Stroop. This was, this ordinance will designate through movements and right turn-only movements that will improve traffic flows at the intersection, particularly as it relates to our school crossings at that location, and as for not only pedestrian flows, but also bus and car traffic flows as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, that's first reading. We will see that on the agenda next week. We have no certifications and petitions tonight. Manager's report? Steve? I mean, Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a number of community update items for you this evening. The first, just reminding everyone that Fray's season is underway, and you can purchase tickets at Fray's Fan Store, Fray's Fan Store at Town and Country Shopping Center, or at fray's.com or etix.com. It'll be a warm shows this week, but we will have shows this week at the Fray's Pavilion. The city of Kettering's volunteer office is accepting nominations for our Neighborhood Pride Program. If you have a neighbor or resident that you would like to nominate their property for a Neighborhood Pride Award, you can go on our website at ketteringoh.org, or you can call our volunteer office at 296-2433 to nominate someone. Brief update on, actually, two updates on Rumpke Waste and Recycling. The first is a billing adjustment. Pursuant to the contract, Rumpke can have a price increase beginning July 1 of this year. That increase will be approximately 3%. So the monthly bill will go from $15.25 to $15.71, or $47.13 a quarter. That's our first announcement regarding Rumpke, and that fee increase will be on, again, the invoice you'll be receiving shortly for the July through September timeframe. The second announcement is it's hot outside, and Rumpke has announced that they will be altering their pickup schedule to try to reduce the number of hours that they're out on the streets during the high temperature stages of the day. So they will be starting pickup earlier. So we are, and we have encouraged this week, and I encourage tonight through this announcement, that if your trash day is Thursday, put your trash out on Wednesday night so that you'll be certain that it's there when they come by earlier in the morning than normal procedure. So just set your trash out the night before this week as Rumpke battles through the heat along with all of us. A quick announcement about an upcoming road closure. It's a little bit off in the distance, but fast approaching. Spalding Road will have road closures beginning right around July 5. We'll be repaving Spalding Road, but at the same time partnering with the county for some work on the bridge there on Spalding just west of county line. So there'll be periods of road closure lasting up to about five days. There will be detour signage and signage, keeping everyone aware of the situation. If anyone has any questions on that, they can contact our Engineering Department. We mentioned Fray's earlier, and tomorrow night, our Sister Cities group will be sponsoring Spasnoch. So that event will take place starting at 5:30 tomorrow night at the Fray's Pavilion. On Saturday, the annual youth fishing derby will take place at Delco Park, starting at 10:00 a.m., with registration at 9:00 a.m. Our city offices will be closed on Monday, June 20, in observance of Juneteenth. There will not be a delay in trash service that week. So we will be closed this Monday in the administrative offices. Also, in regards to the Juneteenth celebration, we were going to have a slide tonight telling you about the Juneteenth celebration at Pollan Farm from 11:30 to 1 o'clock, and that tickets are still available. The late-breaking news is tickets are no longer available. The event has sold out, so we're very pleased in the first year of that event to reach capacity, if you will. But again, that event will take place at Pollan Farm from 11:30 to 1. Our Kettering Leadership Academy, through our volunteer office, is taking, is currently taking applications for the upcoming academy class that will start in August. If you're interested in participating in the academy, you can contact our volunteer office or go to our website at ketteringoh.org. And finally, Your Honor, our last slide is just a reminder that if you'd like to have a neighborhood block party, you can request a block party request form from our Engineering Department at 296-2436, and utilization of that form helps us coordinate services for your block party and make sure that we can make the most out of it. And I'm sure that you're going to want to contact us because BCR will bring ice cream, I'm told. So we want to make sure that you fill out a request form. Your Honor, that's all I have for you. Steve, you for the...
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwederman. At this time, if you would like to come speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council? Seeing none, we will move on to council reports. Mrs. Fisher.
So, Your Honor, since the last council meeting, I have attended at least 18 either meetings or events. And I will tell you, while I've been personally moved by several, like the police memorial service, and also the ribbon cutting of two women who have recently opened a business, I want to highlight two other ones that are important, and it just goes to show how much volunteerism there is in our great city. We feed children in the Trails of Oak Creek as a city in one of our most at-needs neighborhoods, and I reached out to several partners to take care of this week. And so Backpack Program took Monday, Green Monoc Park Church took Tuesday. Wednesday, the Noon Optimist stepped up. On Thursday, the Rotarians are taking it, and on Friday, our own employee council within the city's taking it. And I bring that up because when I made the phone calls, people were very eager to jump in, knowing that there was a need. Likewise, I had an opportunity to work down at Sinclair's Warehouse with the Pathways to Ownership, which is a regional effort to help rebuild some areas that were hit by our tornadoes. And so as we realized, there's less apartments, and they're building a lot of homes for first-time homeowners. So I was building garage walls. And so if there are others that want to be, come involved in that building, as well as the Habitat for Humanity, lots of opportunities to hold a hammer and beat some nails.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the work you do, Jackie. You do go to 18 some fancy places. Pretty amazing. Mr. Kleipass.
Thank you, Your Honor. Most of us attended the Memorial Day service over at our cemetery, Beaver Town Cemetery. We joined an event that has been held for quite a few years by the American Legion Post 598, which is here in Kettering. But thanks to Mary Esbel for helping put that together, or a little joint effort between the city and the American Legion from Kettering. Also, on, just a week or so ago, we'll mention that the former mayor, Don Patterson, and I attended the Kettering Backpack Program Board Meeting. And the purpose of attending that meeting was to present a check to the Backpack Program from the efforts of many folks here on council and on staff and throughout the community. It was, represented the net proceeds from Don Patterson's retirement event that was held in mid-January. And we were able to present a check, thanks for, Jackie, for setting it up, to the Backpack Program for $9,000. And they were very appreciative of that, and of course, we all know about the Kettering Backpack Program and the work they do with Kettering youth. I've been saying for several months now that I've been crying and crying about the bad weather that Spasnoch has experienced in the last four or five years. And that bad weather was rain. This year, we're hoping it rains tomorrow because it's going to be hot. So we've got plenty of shade at Lincoln Park, a lot of cool beverages. So as the manager mentioned, Spasnoch is tomorrow night at 5:30 at the Lincoln Park Commons, thanks to all the folks here on staff and on council that are going to be volunteering tomorrow night. And last but not least, times are tough for our businesses out there and for all of us. But still, stay close to home and shop Kettering. Don't use up much gas that way. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kleipass. Paul.
We are in a heat wave right now, and I just want to encourage residents to check on your elderly neighbors. Make sure they're staying cool. With energy prices at an all-time high right now, people might be tempted to turn their AC off. And if that's the case, we have the senior center people can go to, and the rec center where people can cool off, and just want to encourage people to stay cool and go to a cool place if you don't have AC. The second thing I want to say, I have my two kids here with me tonight, Hope and Justice. They are in Kettering schools and have really enjoyed Kettering schools. They're really enjoying the rec center this summer. One's going to be in middle school and the other in elementary school next year. And I'm anxious, like other concerned parents, how do we keep our kids safe from gun violence? And I haven't thought about much else since Uvalde that happened right before our city council meeting two weeks ago. So I hope that we can cooperate with the city and schools to make it happen, to keep our kids safe. I know, I trust our police department will do all that they can, and our schools will do all that they can. My prayers are with our kids and the parents, especially the parents in Uvalde this year. We've got a real problem with gun violence in this country, and I hope we can make steps in the city to address it.
I would like to thank all of the residents who came to the District 1 Town Hall on Monday, June 6, as well as Mrs. Hall, Mr. Schwederman, Mr. Bergstrasser, Chief Protsman, Protsman? Sorry, Representative Andrea White, for participating. We had a great turnout and a lot of productive discussions. It was a wonderful event. I want to thank everyone again. And like Mr. Schwederman, I was going to encourage people to buy tickets for Juneteenth, but it's sold out. Yay! So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We had a community meeting Wednesday, May 25, at a neighborhood called the Golf Club Estates, and it was regarding water issues in a neighborhood. And I must say, in all the years that we've had these community meetings, I think this was close to one of the larger groups that I've seen. I think we guessed around 75 people, something in that neighborhood. And that was great, and people were respectful generally, and we had a good conversation. So I was just so happy with our city staff that was there, from our Engineering Department, our manager, our Assistant City Manager, really did a good job of explaining what the project is and how it's going to happen moving forward. The police memorial has been mentioned, and every year, that's a very solemn ceremony, normally outdoors. And this year, because of threatening weather, they had to move it into this chamber, and I really was concerned, how were they going to do that? And I must say, they had, I believe, 28 sets of flowers up here for all those in our police service that have passed over the years, and it was a very moving and a beautiful ceremony. They had the 21-gun salute. Thank goodness not indoors, but not too far outdoors. And I must say, it kind of rattled the walls, and it was beautiful. And then, of course, the Amazing Grace on the bagpipe started here and walked down the street, and it was really kind of neat. Thank you, Chief, for putting that together. It's a good program. One other comment on a community project. Last Saturday, June 11, we started, kicked off the Cities of Service Program for this year, and the Van Buren neighborhood is identified as where that project's going to take place this year. It started with a community picnic, if you will, and they estimated about 100 folks were there. And a lot of us on council were there. It was great to see the neighbors and look forward to that upcoming project as we move forward. And it was mentioned, we do have a couple of spots left on the Kettering Leadership Academy. Application's open until July 1, so if you're interested, please contact the volunteer office. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Most of what I planned on covering has been touched on today, but I'd just like to comment that... I like my volume. There you go. I'd just like to comment, this is one of those... I'd just like to comment, this is one of those timeframes, you know, two weeks, like you said, 18 events, and the breadth of these, you know, everything from Spasnoch to town halls that people are showing up at, and the Backpack Program added. Cities of Service, just a remarkable thing. The memorial, just one thing after another that reminds me why this is such a wonderful city to live in, and I appreciate all of our citizens. I would like to make a brief comment because some, a number of you have made comments about it. City Council did last week send a letter to the governor asking him to veto the gun legislation that, allowing guns in schools. That was a unanimous decision of council to send that or to sign that letter, and it wasn't formally agreed on in chambers, but in discussion. And the positive feedback, frankly, that we've received from that has really overwhelmed me. Very, very few people seem to have objected to that. It may be reflective that nobody really has the answers, but it certainly tells us that people want to solve this problem. They've had it. And so even if they were supportive of the governor signing that, it's still saying we need to really do something. And we continue to need to think constructively and come together as a community in whatever forums we can to try to address what has become a national, if not an international, problem. So thank you, everyone, for your support for that, and any opportunities or suggestions you have as to how we might better address that issue, we'd be more than happy to hear from you. So with that, that concludes our business for tonight. We, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be June 28th, 2022, and this meeting is now adjourned. Where'd my gravel go? There we go.